I don't think you want to make it.
Go on.
We can do that. I just didn't want it to come up next week. Yes, it would be better next week, but the only thing. I just have one statement that we need to make. Other than that's fine, next week we'll have more information. In that or I'll just make a statement.
Okay.
I'm trying to do that. That's okay with you?
Yeah. Call this workshop to the order. I'd like to have a motion to adopt the present agenda.
I so moved.
I so got it.
The move is second. Any objections?
Excuse me now.
Call for a vote. Call in favor.
Aye.
Well, Scott, read off the time lady with her gun.
Ready for me? Okay. Well, it's good to be with you all again. I'm Jolie Nixon, as you all know from last time that we met. And I'm here to present your 2017 audit. I know that you all had a copy of the audit. And what I've attempted to do this morning in the graphing that I have is just to summarize, basically, what is in this audit. I will tell you that 2016 was my first year with you all and this year went much smoother. 2016, we were in the transition going from a new software, which made it a little bit more difficult. I was very impressed with how Linda and her staff had the financials in good order, very good shape. So I didn't have as much tedious time as far as tracing things back as I did in 2016. So I appreciate that, Linda and Ella, for your hard work and also Alyssa for her hard work in that. The only finding that I had is a typical finding in small government and that is that unless Linda hands me this per se, you're going to have the finding in there that the financial statements were not prepared by the city manager, they were prepared by our firm. I do keep in mind, I did put the segregation of duty in there, but do keep in mind as a small staff, they do a very good job in compensating. Even though it is only a three-member staff, they do compensate very well and follow behind each other to follow up on what's going on. Thanks. So I did not see any major issues where I was concerned with that. But what I want to do is give you a summary and I've compared on these slides or graphs that you have in front of you. The first one is the summary of net position and this is just an overall picture of how you did in 2016 and 2017. It is a little bit of small type, so I hope you can read it. But we start with the governmental activities in the first two columns and then your business type activities, of course, is your water sanitation fund. But you can see total assets, if we go to that total column, for 2017 were 7.4 million in comparison to 2016 of 7.3 million. Liabilities, this is one thing that I've always been impressed with you all, you have very little debt. Your debt is in your water and sanitation fund and that is around 1.6 million. But as far as in your general and overall governmental activities, there is no debt in there. The long-term liabilities that you see in the governmental relate to pension and years ago, a couple of years ago, that was the new thing that they required that we do is put a book, the net pension liability on the book. So if something happened today and you had to pay those pensions, that's, you know, what it would be. And then you also have the owner and property tax revenue in the governmental and that is just the property taxes that are booked before the end of the year that will actually come due in '18. The most, one of the things that's important when you look at this is your net position towards the bottom. So when you look at that, you have net invested in capital assets and then you have those restricted for capital projects, which is you have a small amount of money left in your SPOSS account and that's what that is. And then you have your unrestricted. Your unrestricted is what is for use, for ongoing use. That that is restricted for the capital assets is to allow you to replace those assets as they go on. And that is net because we say it's net minus the debt. So in your water sanitation fund, it's taking into account the debt that's owed on that. So just the highlights when looking at that. The largest portion of your net position, about 67%, reflects your investment in your capital assets. And that's your landings, your utility systems.
And that, that is a question on the previous page.
Uh huh.
Why answer it if you don't take into account depreciation on this balance sheet, whether as an asset or...
You are. In the capital assets, that's net of accumulated depreciation. So when you see the, like the 1.5 in governmental and the 3.1 under business type, that is your assets at historical cost minus accumulated depreciation. So that's the depreciation that has been taken so far over the useful life.
Well, I guess my question is, we are correctly underfunded in depreciation and doesn't have a negative figure in here, how far we're underfunded?
You're not underfunded. I'm not sure that I understand that question. We are, we have been taking depreciation ever since the asset went into service. And that depreciation is taken over the useful life of whatever the asset is, depending on if it's a building, if it's infrastructure or it's equipment.
All right, you've been taking depreciation, but we do not have depreciation money in the fund.
Okay, we're going to get to that.
Okay.
That's not, this, this is...
That's not...
I think this is more your balance sheet. Depreciation expense per se is going to come over on your income statement side.
Please tell me what page you're on.
Okay, we are looking at page two. And I'm just, I'm giving the highlights, which I have noted on page three, but I'm giving you those highlights as you, as you look at page two. In your net position, only over 1.5 million of your net position is considered to be unrestricted and that is what can be used for your ongoing obligation to your citizens and creditors that you may have.
Quick question for you there.
Yeah.
Is the 1.7 in the 2016 column, that's year end 2016?
That's right.
Okay, so it was 1.7, 2017, 1.1. Okay, gotcha.
That's right. So that unrestricted net position did decrease by about 9% from 2016, but you still remain very liquid. You have over 2.6 million in your cash accounts. And I think that's important to point out. So you continue to invest in your capital assets. There was a 6% overall increase from 2016 to 2017 in your capital assets alone. Any questions on that summary of net position that you see?
Other than that, does include all funds, enterprise funds, general funds?
It does.
Includes all funds.
It does. On page four, this, we call this the changes in net position. Think of this as your income statement in the business world. And again, we have the governmental, this is the overall government-wide changes in activities. So we have your, your program revenues, your charges for services, your, any grants that you received, and then your general revenues where we have all of your taxes. And then we have your expenses broken down by department.
Excuse me, one quick question. I don't have a copy of that, so which page in the audit report are you looking at?
In the audit report, that would be on page five.
Do we have the extra copies of this?
There's one floating around, but we just haven't...
I just was handing one.
So on this, in comparison to '16, you'll see that overall you had a positive change in your net position of 223,000. In comparison to '16, it was 305,000. 24,000 of that was in your enterprise fund, 199 of that was in your governmental activities. In this statement, depreciation is accounted for. This is what we call on a modified accrual basis, so whatever you spent in capital outlays comes out and those items are depreciated and that depreciation expense is accounted for in this statement. Just some highlights of this as you're looking at it and I'll talk about that, your enterprise fund first. Your revenues, you had a slight decrease in revenues, about 2.5% compared to '16. Expenses did increase in your enterprise fund, about 6.6%. The biggest areas of that increase were for technical surface, I believe you all had a sewer feasibility study done. And then materials and supplies, your disposal, landfill cost, and then salaries in the sanitation area, that those were your big increases in expense areas for your enterprise fund. You had a nominal decrease in governmental revenues, less than 1%. Expenses did increase by 3% from '16 to '17. The biggest areas of that increase were the departments of police and courts, general government and the parks area. Any questions on this? Okay, on page six, this shows your percentages. I wanted you to see your percentages in just the governmental activities alone. For where are the largest amount of your revenues coming in and the largest amount of expenses, where are those going? Obviously for you all, your property taxes and it's hard to see that and I apologize, but it's around 83%. The property taxes make up your revenue percentage. As far as expenses, the largest is in your public safety. If you combine, you know, your fire and your, and your policing courts, you're around 39%. And then public works and streets is around 24% with general government around 27.
Are you on page seven there?
Six.
Page six.
Six.
Okay, and enterprise fund, how we account for that does not change. So I didn't break that out like I did general fund, but I wanted to give you a synopsis of just the changes in your general fund alone. And that is found on page seven. And you can see total revenue using the general fund for '17 were close to 1.2 million, 1.184 versus '16 of 1.195. When you look at this, you do see a change in fund balance and there is a loss in fund balance of 263,000 compared to a positive fund balance of 145,000 in '16. That is because there was on, close to 600,000 in capital outlays in the general fund for '17. And in this statement, we are accounting for the capital outlays, it's like a cash basis statement. So depreciation is not accounted for here, we're accounting for the expenditure, the total expenditure. If you were to take out, and I think an important thing to look at is if you took out what you spent in capital outlays, are you bringing enough to cover the normal every day? And you are, because you spent close to 600,000 in capital outlays. The loss was around 263. So I'm sure everybody followed me on that.
So without the capital expenditures being expensed to the general fund, you felt sizable surplus?
Yes, yes. So in, in the general fund alone, about 728,000, that is what is considered unrestricted, you know, for ongoing use and that did decrease from 991. But as I said, you had a less than 1% decrease in your revenues in general fund. Expenses in this statement increased by 37.6% from '16. And again, keep in mind, it's because it accounts for your capital outlays and the biggest areas for that in '17 were your public works, streets and your parks. Your increase in expenses was due to your investment in capital assets in '17. Actually, I said close to 600, it's actually 537, 185 were spent in capital outlays compared to over 158,000 in 2016. Your average expenses in '17 totaled over 121,000. If you, if we looked at your cash and your cash equivalents at the end of the year, the city could cover a little over 13 months of expenses if cash inflows were to cease, which we know that's not going to happen. Why is that important? That's pretty much your reserve. Recommended reserve by the Government Finance Officers Association is around two, a minimum of two months. So you can see you're well above that.
We're 12, right?
You're at 13.
13.
So at the end of '17, your unrestricted fund balance was around 61.5% of your total revenues of your general fund. So very healthy, I mean very healthy financial picture for you all. Just some other things, you're, I also wanted to do the same as far as your enterprise funds. Your average expenses in your enterprise fund totaled lower than 48,000 a month. Given the cash in that fund, you could cover close to 20 months of expenses if your cash was close to 600,000. So your unrestricted fund balance in that fund is 1.57 times the total of operating revenue. So you have tremendous reserves set up in there.
Sounds like we're in good shape.
You are. You're in very healthy shape. Wow.
Listen, I don't know about you, but I've offered a lot of studies in my career and I've never seen one in as good an economic condition as this one. I've never seen one without any debt in the general fund either.
It's very rare to see it without debt and I commend you for that. To have, to have no debt and to have the reserve built up. A lot are struggling with just reserves, having, have liquidity. And they would love to have the liquidity that you all have, so. If something goes wrong, and the liquidity is important because if you did have an emergency, then you know that you're able to handle that. That is the term of law. Any questions?
No, I'm going to make sure of that. I agree with you, like $600,000 is where we kind of need to hold it at our bottom. I'm going to make sure we stay there.
We made that decision July of last year to do that. Spending money on family.
We went a little below it, but we still want to stay there. And that's what I hope this council will help us do.
Any other questions?
I appreciate your summary presentation, it's very good and boils it down to more understandable than trying to weed through all.
You mean you didn't understand the audit?
No way.
It appeared that there was a long-term liability of pensions. Now, is that going to be taken care of by the Georgia Municipal Association or is there any obligation on part of the city of Sky Valley?
There would be an obligation on the city of Sky Valley if those were to come due immediately. You know, in the past, we've not had to book that net pension liability. The city has always made a recommended contribution that GMA has recommended. So that is being done year in and year out. But I guess about two years ago, they said, well, we want everybody to know that if it was to come due tomorrow, what, what would be expected of your city? So that is, that is the scenario then, and that's why we booked that liability. Now, the reality of that happening, you know, but just so you know, so, but you, you can cover it. If that were to happen with your building funds, you could very well cover that.
But is it, should the, should the city be contributing more to that eventuality? I thought that we were participating in a big plan.
You are.
That sits out there and they're actually going to take responsibility for those when they come to you. Do I misunderstand?
No, well, I think what he's thinking of, you, the city does contribute what GMA recommends.
Right.
And when there is a payout, it is funneling through GMA, so they are handling that. However, if everyone were to leave today.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Then they're going to come and say, hey, okay, well, we told you, you only had to contribute $90,000, well, guess what?
Did you close the city down and fire everybody? That would be your liability.
Right, right.
All right.
Good enough.
I'm going to go ahead.
I just said it's good enough. I'll take it.
Page six on this, clarify something for me, if you will. We have compensated absences and net pension liabilities are negative. Are we up to date or are we behind? This is a negative figure here on both of them.
You're in the audit?
I'm on your, yes, I'm on your audit page number six.
Okay.
Near the bottom, you've got a negative 12,000, negative 13,000.
This is the, this is the balance sheet for just the governmental funds alone.
Right.
And this is that animal where we are going from, we're taking it, adhering it back to page four. However, on this statement, where page four is on a modified accrual basis, again, this is more of on the cash basis. So what we're doing at the bottom there, we're reconciling this statement back to page four. So in other words, your capital assets are not accounted for in that balance sheet at the top. Your compensated absences are not, your net pension liability. So that is more of a reconciliation in this, in this fund. If you look on page four, 113,000, that is your net pension liability for the, for the governmental fund. And for the enterprise fund, it's 33,851.
Okay, so we are up to date. We're not behind in our...
Now, that is your liability, but that is what I'm saying, you are making the recommended contribution, but this is what would be owed if everybody left today.
I got it, that goes back to what you're talking about. Okay, that's where I kind of got lost a little bit with you there.
Yeah.
Sorry. So if everybody left today, fine, but as long as they don't, we're where we're supposed to be.
I think we're covered either way.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Jolie, on those same two pages, the, with the fund balance, well, you've got the unrestricted net position of 604, but the actual fund balance, we should be looking at six, so we're at 728.9, is that correct?
That's right.
I see the 604 on page four and then it's 728 on page six, if I should look down.
That's right.
Okay.
And it, you know, has to do with the different accounting methods that we are using. The main thing on page six comparing to page four is that your net position, the total net position, that we're reconciling back to that number.
Does that have to do with depreciation or what?
The items that you see in that reconciliation are items that, for instance, on your capital assets, because in the, in the statement of governmental funds, we are taking those all out at one time as if you paid for them then and there. So we're not figuring depreciation in this statement. The other thing is compensating absences and net pension liability are liabilities that are due and possibly payable in another time period, not the current period. So those are not accounted for. Only things that are due within the current period are accounted for on this governmental fund statement. It does get confusing. I'll tell you, they say, these audits are very open, as you know, you all can have a copy, but I do think it's very hard for you to understand them because of the different methods, so.
One of the major differences in, in page six, you're recording accounts, payable accounts receivable. And in the general fund, you know, your cash basis, you don't consider, it's pretty close to the difference.
Any other questions?
Jolie, then, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll...
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Jolie.
I think this is the best summary.
Not many firms do that.
I really appreciate it.
All right, moving along, we have the...
Excuse me, mayor, since our attorney is now here, I wanted to make sure he was here. I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda that we go into executive session to discuss potential litigation. This is going to bring up like some details in that letter that you sent out last night. They're going to second one.
I'll second that.
The move is second. Should we go into executive session right now? Do I have a motion?
Book, probably, book a workshop.
Have a vote on this?
Aye.
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 Okay, okay. Should we go into executive session on the letter? From the attorney?
I apologize for being late, that's a real bad record, 4:41 an average time. They detoured us around, it took us 20 minutes, but... I got a little bit of that truck bringing building supplies in. Look at that, came up sky somewhere.
Here's the letter, fellow. At this point, it's not, council can make a public address.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any attention. What, what, Warren Ockley have a statement?
I'm curious, is it possible we could wait until we finished with the agenda that we have today so that these folks don't have to sit around?
No, that's what I'm suggesting.
Oh, then we finish. Okay, okay. Thank you.
We have the city called to look at pension. We only, we put it out for bid, we only got one bid back as far as the construction.
That was the labor, right.
And, yes, and then we just got the new bids on material. Reeves Hardware was $3,088. Home Depot was $3,109. And... Supply Mark was...
3265.
2,400.
Well, that's what taxed, 3265 would be taxed.
Now, we, we know that we got to do something down there. We also know that we have no funds for this, but we can go into our reserve funds, is that correct, Linda?
If the council chooses to do it, yes.
If the council wishes to. So first off, are we to have a motion to accept one of these bids?
I would like to make a motion to accept Reeves as the, because it's hometown, but I don't know if the workshop, you do that, you do that in the council meeting. Okay.
So really what we need to know is, are y'all ready to put this on the council or to the board?
Yes.
Me neither. Or do we need to go back out to bid since we only have one? I will say, I did get another one before we had the plan drawn up, when they drew up the plan. And it was 8680, so it was much higher than the one that we have, but that was by Marcella. But I didn't include it in the bids because it was before we had to and he didn't have to do it after the plan.
Did we ever use this company before?
Thank you, Ken. I, I, I hope you use it just in person, other businesses in North Carolina.
Yeah, he's kind of one of the most popular ones around, but I think we used them on our gate one time, but nothing, no big projects.
Well, Neil, there was a question, I believe, in the last one that you had about that Home Depot was the only one that had bid grade one material and did you go back and get the other bids all reaching? and, um, did you go back and get the other bids all reached and just?
Yeah, this is all, this is the new bid.
That's the new bids, okay.
These are all the new bids. Yeah. With that, with an update of all the equipment.
Well, I would like to see, don't anything I'd like to say for keeping on the agenda is, Linda, if you would, take a look at a budget categories and see if there's somewhere we can get this out of another category without having to go into reserve funds.
Question for you, that three thousand and change in splosh, what's that earmarked for?
Roads.
Roads. Understand, we've gotten a little bit more lenient on that, is there any chance that can be a roads project or?
Well, since we're doing roads anyway, I understand it was approved at the last meeting, so I would say use the road money for the road, and if you wanna use the three thousand, you know.
Uh, offset that hundred and seventy.
There's the materials, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to cover it in the, just in the normal budget because our insurance, um, went up really high.
The paving was funded, uh, there was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar transfer and then other sixty, something like that, or whatever, the rest of it was gonna be used, paid for out of the operating budget. What part of that was used last year, what part do we still have this year, other than on the hundred and twenty-two thousand that was transferred out of the fund?
Are you talking about in the budget?
Um, uh, yeah.
So what is our current fund balance?
Fund balance according to the audit was seven twenty-eight.
Well, I'm going back today.
Where, where I came across it was when I was looking back at the, um, agenda packet, when the road, um, paving contract was passed last year, and it stipulated exactly how that was gonna be paid for. And so that, and that, the money transferred last year in twenty seventeen, what, what portion of that got used last year? I know the operating revenue portion of it did.
Right, um, so the rest of it was coming from fund balance.
Fund balance, that, well, that's a hundred and twenty-two, I'm thinking of.
For last year, you're talking about?
It seemed like it was supposed to cover the whole project both years, because we were, it was talking about a two-year sum of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, or was the total, two-year contract more than that, was it five hundred and something?
Yeah, the.
Just last year was three sixty-two.
Right.
Okay, I'm, that's where I was confused, thank you for pointing that out.
So a hundred and eight forty-four was coming out of the original budget from saved surplus for roads, and then we added a hundred and forty-nine to that last year.
And then this year we'll do the same thing, take part of it out of the operating revenue and then the other part out of the surplus.
So this year, it's all in the operating.
All in the operating, okay. Can we, can we, can we do what was done last year and pay for some of the paving this year by doing a funds transfer? To free, to free up some of the oversupply of monies we have.
I mean, you can use surplus for anything, council chooses to use surplus.
It sounds like we need to make a transfer of funds.
What is the surplus?
Well, you don't transfer.
What's our unrestricted fund balance, why don't we just general fund?
You're familiar with, with what I'm talking about, from last year, we stipulated how the paving for last year was gonna be paid.
Yeah, part of it was coming from fund balance and part of it was in our operating budget.
Right.
This year, it's covered all in our operating budget, we're not planning on a transfer from fund balance unless you all decide to do something outside of what's budgeted.
Okay, what, um, what I'm suggesting is that we do just that.
But you can.
You want to fray up some funds.
Yeah.
The question is, what is the fund balance at this moment, the general balance, unrestricted funds and the general fund?
I mean, all I can give you is, I mean, we haven't used anything out of surplus yet, so it'll be the same as.
Seven hundred and some thousand, right? From according to the audit. I'll be right back.
Now, I, I will say, I mean, if we've talked about trying to save, you know, and cover, you know, the cost of replacement of certain items, if we want to assign any of that fund balance to specific departments, you know, just so you can see it basically on our financials, you know, they may not do it much at the audit level, but, you know, in our financial statements, you know, we can do that too. Right now, it's, you know, it sits in the loan, you know. Even though we have some of it broken down on ours, she doesn't do that on theirs unless it's legally restricted, so.
Right, well, that's what I'm gonna get back to, is what the real, real number is, that we have, to make sure where we're headed if we pull something out.
Yeah.
And right now, you're showing on your, on your June financial statement, uh, you have a variance, meaning that, uh, right now, we're short, we're gonna be spending according to this another seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand between now and December. And so I wanna make sure that whatever we use that month, whatever we have in, in fund balance availability, last that figure does not get us down into a three or four hundred dollar reserve. That's what I'm concerned about, or we like to at least be able to answer.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have my, my interest.
I know you don't have it right now, but yeah, we can, if you don't mind, that would be great, help us make a wise decision next week.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Because, I mean, what she presented looked very good with all the money we have, and I think a lot of people don't understand that these are enterprise funds has, you know, for our water department, that was what, eight, nine hundred thousand of it? So all of this money that we look really good is actually in other, uh, departments that don't earn everyday operating, so we, you know, it, it does kind of paint a picture that's not exactly.
Well, the seven twenty-eight is just the general fund, the general government.
If you can verify that's what we've got, for sure, we're gonna be great, not, not as a decent number of beds, right now.
Well, and you've gotta look at, like I said, we've got some things allocated towards different departments for our purposes. You see what I'm saying? And it's, it's not, that she's gonna put all together and, you know, so, and it can be used, I mean, y'all can change your mind and use it and whatever. We just kind of put it in different departments, um, to save, well, saving pots of money, I guess, you'd say, for equipment replacement, that kind of thing. So she's gonna include all that into one, one pot of money, whereas we may segregate it out to say roads has a hundred thousand and so forth.
Do we need a, uh, i- i- if it is, is the case, and the funds are available, do we need a budget resolution then to, um, to make those changes?
If you wanna amend the budget, yeah, um, now it was suggested that we didn't do that until one time at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Um, earlier.
Is that, is that feasible to do that though?
That's why it's been done in the past.
You can do it either way according to what she's saying, as long as the council votes to do whatever it is that's.
Been multiple resolutions on budgets.
Last year, we did.
Last year, I did, I did, the year, a couple of years ago, I was just one, if I recall.
Right, so a lot of times we'll just reconcile it at the end of the year.
If it's, you know, I mean, like you do just once, if that's called within the, the season.
She just said if there was something really big, like last year was the road paving, something really big that was gonna throw off your financial statements for the rest of the year, you know, if you didn't amend it during the year, then it was gonna make it look like you were doing really bad the whole year, you know, where you just made a change to.
I was speaking then, I forgot to ask her in the audit about that, her total part number was a hundred and fifty-five thousand for, that was spent on parts, capital outlay?
A hundred and fifty-seven, eight or something.
Yeah, a little over a hundred and fifty-five, and when I'd gone through the detailed ledger you sent me, I'd come up with a number closer to two hundred thousand that was spent on parts. Yeah.
We had a hundred and seventy, seventy-four budgeted, and we only, and we ended up amending the budget to a hundred and seventy.
It just looked to me like there was things, quite a few things coded to road and works, and that was part.
It's all general fund, so she's not gonna.
Forty-three hundred dollars in here for the part.
For what year?
On page five.
Page five, the B.
Of the budget, or the, no, no.
The, the minute, the parolage?
Yes, the parolage.
Page five?
No.
See what you got there.
Statement of activities for year ending December thirty-first, part forty-three hundred and twenty-seven.
That's, that's just your regular operating, that's not your capital.
Yeah, that's not the capital outlay.
Okay, I got you, so that was on top of the capital outlay.
Yeah, that must be, um, maintenance and clean the restrooms, mow the yard.
There you go. Now, see, here was my concern while I wanted, the difference was, we had nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, um, that was coming in from tax revenue that was brought over in January. We had seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hun- five hundred and ninety dollars left in the fund, which is a total of one point six seven two. And we have a budget this year of one point one nine six, which would leave us with four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, not seven twenty-eight. Plus whatever you're taking in, right now, we're a hundred and seven thousand dollars short according to this one, left to come in for the balance of the year. So anyway, that's, that's the numbers I'm tracking right there. Because this is the number, this, this four seventy-six number is the reserve that we need to keep an eye on, make sure that gets back into the six hundred range.
And any other questions you should ask her once you're through, but, um, I can certainly submit any questions that you have.
Oh, I don't need to ask her, but she's got a budget and the numbers, that's where I'm wanting to point from, you see what I'm saying?
No, but you said you wanted to ask.
We want, we want the actual.
No, I want the actual, I wasn't asking.
Actual year to date.
I don't know where we are with that, not including water funds, garbage funds and all of that, those need to stay where they are. We don't, in my opinion, we shouldn't be bothering those at this point. And that's where she's represented, we have all this money, is including those other two funds. And those funds aren't our everyday operating funds for the, the city, okay? And that's why we get back to these numbers, not those.
Okay.
So we're good to get back to item four, the, uh, we don't have, we have a one bid and we have a three bids on materials, that's, and so, is there any more discussion on the, uh, CDG overlooked?
Well, I just, uh, we only got the one bid from Franklin Fence.
Right.
Nobody else.
How, from a bid quote, I mean, uh, how can, and can we believe that that's going to be the, the, the cost of, uh, the labor?
How can we hold it? What if he, he gets in there and he finds this, that, the other, and he can't dig the holes like he expected to, and he has to rent special equipment to drill or thing like that? Where are we with that? He'd be, be able to modify his bid?
I mean, if we don't make a change to what we want, if we don't do any kind of change orders, then, you know, we can ask the attorney if we can write a contract that would be, and then not to exceed.
We talked about that last time.
Because that's my concern, we take down this thing all, prepare in, in preparation for the new fence, and then come to find out some cost of forty thousand to get it done, because he can't get in through rock or whatever.
Quick, quick question, just so I can figure this into the whole cost of the project, what, what are you and James estimating that the total cost of demolition's gonna be?
I think that's gonna be our label, our labor and landfill costs, so I, I don't, I don't know what it would cost. I mean, I don't even know how to estimate that. I mean, I'm sure we can get it down in the day, but I don't know how much it's gonna weigh to dump it.
That's something we need to consider.
I mean, we have our own equipment, we're not gonna have to rent any equipment or anything, so it's just a matter of labor costs and the landfill.
Well, labor costs is, is, uh, it's the same, whether they're tearing that fence down or they're cutting grass.
I, I, I don't disagree with that, but I think it needs to.
The, the, only existing cost as far as the city's return would be in the, uh, where we have to haul it to, and if we have to pay to dump it someplace.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but looking at projects, I would like to know about how many hours would James estimate we pay to tear down the fence and haul it off? And, 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 once I knew that information, I might say, Frank the Fence, why don't you put demolition in your price too? And he might, his price this, and why not consider that? And also with, uh, Neil, we need to get some more bids on this. Absolutely, the total project cost is up over, is up over ten thousand dollars, it's probably gonna push fifteen when you put in the cost of demolition, and.
Bids were put out all over, and we only had, we only received one bid back.
I'd like to get a bid for somebody to come in, demolish, bring the materials in and do the job.
We did that to begin with, um, before we actually, when we first started running estimates, um, the estimate to remove and haul off existing rock columns and wood, spread gravel on fence line was twenty-five hundred dollars. From the same person, twenty-five hundred.
Okay, so twenty-five hundred there plus fifteen hundred, eight, I want sort of about eleven or twelve thousand dollars for the whole project. If you went with, if you just use that as a estimate. Trying to get total cost, cost projects here where we followed in the city's financial policy for this project.
I don't know that we have any choice.
Sure we do.
We have a choice to wait with loan, with letting.
I agree.
But is that a liability?
We have a choice, it's, it's true, just don't do anything, but we also, uh, I think it's under the contract with Merrill that we maintain that thing.
Okay, now, the, the fence was known to be in disrepair when, last year, so at some point. So where is it in the budget for that fence to be repaired?
There is, it's not in the budget for this year.
Why wasn't it in the budget?
There's no money for it this year in the budget, if you want a budget for it for next year, we can try to do that, but.
Let's talk about it next Tuesday then, in a preliminary, uh, budget workshop for next year.
That's fine, there's no pressure.
I agree.
It's fine. We can do that?
Yep.
Okay.
Could be proven with taxpayers' money.
All right, on item five. For a tree trim, we did, uh, we put out a bid to the different, uh, tree trimmers to come in and with their whole crew in a two-week period.
Hundred hours.
Hundred hours.
Yeah.
It was bid.
For a hundred hours, and they worked it, we just see how far they go, we got one, one bid?
One bid, and it was light, and that was for twenty thousand for using a six-man crew, ten dollars off per hour if we did it in the winter months. If you wanted to use a four-man crew, then a hundred and seventy-five an hour. So it went from two twenty-five, a five man is two hundred, and a four man is one seventy-five, so basically twenty-five dollars per man.
That was from, uh, the Ellenbergs?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, I think his bid looks pretty reasonable, this is just my opinion, um, I think we should definitely wait and do it during December, January and February, and get the ten dollars off per hour, per person on that crew, right, Linda?
Twenty-four hundred dollars a month even now.
And then in the, the winter. And then in the, the winter time, it'd also be, uh, you know.
I don't think it's per person, I think it's ten dollars total, but I have to.
So instead of two, two hundred an hour, he's just saying in the winter it'll be one ninety an hour?
Yes, I think so.
Would you verify that with him?
Yeah, he did say that. Yes.
So it's a discount for not a difference in price between twenty-five dollars an hour per man and ten dollars an hour a man?
No, he just says, no, in the winter, December, January, February, ten dollars per hour would be what he would take off. He didn't say per person, so we'll, we'll double check.
He did say one hour.
He did say.
Seven, seven hundred.
I have a, I'm confused. We've got too many conversations.
I apologize.
Sorry.
Now, would you start back with y'all's whole conversation and bring us in the daylight?
I was recommending that we look into a man lift such as this, these guys, we rent that for twenty-four hundred dollars per month. So we rent one for one month, the same crew, in other words, I understand the argument to be that the reason it's not being done now is because our bucket truck is inoperative.
Correct.
Without spending some significant money to repair it.
Okay, that's, that's fine, but I'm saying that does not mean if we have a labor issue, that means we have a equipment issue.
That's correct.
We can rent a man lift from Sunbelt Rentals for twenty-four hundred dollars for one month. And we can have our same people, I think I'd much rather do that than spend twenty thousand dollars and let the same people.
Does that have hydraulic hookups and stuff for it, like a tree bucket would, or is that more for like signs?
Yeah, you need to make sure it's got the hydraulic in the bucket, for their saws.
Operating, the, movable from up top.
Yeah.
You can get down the stream.
That's exactly what we use on the golf course, all the time to trim trees, we can get one of these in for a week and go trim all the trees and be done.
That, that, that's true, but, but there are certain safety issues and compliances that have to be there.
They're all there. You have the strappings for you to not have to put the people in and so forth.
That looks pretty light.
No, I'm talking specifically when you take saws up there and do tree trimming. Um, I, if you look at the guys that contract out, the power line companies to do their right aways. Anyway, that's a part of the, of the.
You can't use a aerial lift on a level ground unless it's got outriggers.
I'm sorry?
An aerial lift, like, I think I seen your picture, it's a man basket, right?
Yes, to blow this.
Yeah, that's got to be on level ground unless it's got outriggers on it.
Yeah, like our bucket truck has outriggers.
Yeah. So that would run the cost of that machine up if you got one without riggers.
Okay.
It's not a stable machine, it hung above the ground.
Linda, can I ask a question? How drastic are we going to be with this trimming? Are we going to take away the canopy over the road, or are we going to just cut trees that are growing on the side of the road?
Go.
Reason I'm asking, I have a neighborhood that I walk a mile and three quarters and I don't get the sun any time of the year. And this canopy is beautiful, I'd hate to see it go if you're going to go drastic and cut the canopy out.
Are we going for the trees that are leaning like this, or the limbs that are doing this?
The goal is to definitely trim them to where they're not hitting vehicles, but, um, we also, under our fire laws, guidelines, they want us to eliminate as much of the canopy as we can, because that's how a fire spreads from one side of the road to the other is from the trees. But that being said, we've got a lot of regular trimming to do, some of it, unless we had a huge bucket truck, we're not going to be able to reach anyway. So, you know, our, our goal is to not necessarily, you know, create no canopies within the city, I don't think, but we definitely have a huge amount of trimming that needs to be done.
Like going up Knobry, I was out at my house, even in my little juice, I have to move to the middle of the road if I don't. I've got limbs that are hitting me in the windshield and hitting my antennas and things like that, so.
My neighborhood, like I said, is probably ten degrees cooler than anywhere else because of the tree camp.
Right.
That's great in the summer, in the winter it causes a problem, the snow.
Because there's no leaves in the tree.
We can't get any snow on super roads.
Actually, when it rains, it gets worse up there, because the leaves get heavy and it does, even the rain will drag it down some more.
I'd just like to say, please leave my neighborhood alone.
I, I know, I know how you feel.
Come up and look at it something, it is gorgeous.
Another option, just because we're trying to put a, a cost of, you know, how many hundred feet of roadway, it, the, it, it varies so much around here depending on where you're going and trimming. And with, uh, with the Ellenbergs, um, you know, instead of doing a, a hundred hours once, if we're going to wait till the winter for a discount anyway, we can maybe have a chance to get with some of the guys that work for the power line companies that work right around here, see if we could get a bid from them as well, look at requirements from what Chip's talking about, we've got a little time here. And, uh, if we do decide to go with the crew instead of signing for a hundred hours, probably let them come out here just for one, you know, like, four, ten-hour days or whatever they're working. See, see how far they go, if they can get done.
Well, that was it, that was the beginning of the call.
If, if they, if they get done in that week, what it takes our city forces to do with our bucket truck, the way we've been operating, and if they can get to do in a week what it's taken us four weeks to get done, it may be a lot more efficient to have these guys doing it. Plus, the liability in doing all this tree work is huge. I mean, I've gotten a worker's comp for doing tree work before, it's, the last time I got it was twenty-five cent percent, twenty-five cent on every dollar I was paid with the worker's comp insurance. It's high, so it, it, it is, you're looking at twenty thousand dollars, a hundred hours, but we can break it down into a smaller amount of time to see if it's worth it before we commit it to a whole hundred hours.
Now, that was my other concern, we committed to the hundred hours, is that it gets halfway or all the way?
Well, that, that was one of the things, uh, for going for a hundred hours, is just see how far they can go.
Sure, yeah.
And if we can find, because now we're, we're jumping ahead to a bucket truck, for example. Sixty thousand dollars, secondhand, I mean, I'm just giving that figure.
Sure.
So, it, if, uh, if we could get the whole valley done for forty thousand, and it'd be all done, then our crew should be able to maintain it from there on. Once we get a good job done all the way around and they're in here, you know, and they use their chippers to take care of everything, and we know that there are some big trees that are hanging over the roads that's going to be taken down. And, we, I don't know, just, and I don't think they could either, because every street is, got different, uh, coverage as far as overhang. Some of them, just very few, they could go right down through, others, like, on upper saddleback, it's not too bad, but you could down on the lower part and it's very bad. So, I mean, that, uh, it's hard to say just how far they will go, but I would like to try it, have them try it, and just see where they go for a hundred hours and then decide what our next step would be, whether to continue or get a bucket truck and start playing with it ourselves, or, or just look. I'll gamble on the twenty dollars just to see how far we'd go.
I've got a question. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Your head turned right. Maybe I looked at this, not the way it was intended, but I looked at this as not to exceed a hundred hours. And that meant, uh, I could use twenty hours of this, or fifty hours, or thirty-five, or ten, or whatever, and say, come in and I want you to work this week, like you said, four tens or whatever, and see what, and we tell them where we want them to work. So we have a good appreciation for what that means when they're through. And that we manage how that work is done, where it's done and how much is done, and we can say stop any time or proceed. Uh, is that the intent of this bid, or am I missing a point?
Well, I mean, they gave the hourly rate, of course, based on a, you know, a hundred hours, so, I mean, if you only do twenty hours, I don't know if they give you the same.
We're in holiday.
We do workshop at nine.
Do I now?
We do workshop at nine.
What do you mean?
We start at nine, workshop.
Oh, okay.
Calendar's at ten.
I'm with you though, I like the ten o'clock.
Well, I just say. I, I, I agree with Neil, we, we were asking for per hour price, I, I mean, I think the intent was, when you kind of look at it, you're going to do a hundred hours right off the bat, then it might take us a hundred and forty to get the whole job done. With that being said, it'd be easy to call, um, Phil and ask him, hey, if, if you come out here and do a forty-hour week, or will you hold your, um, you know, I would just have him come out here with four people with his equipment at the hundred and seventy-five hour price, or we wait until December or ten off that, and, and let him see if that's the way to decide to, to go.
Yeah, we need to understand this bid.
Yeah, a, after forty hours, he would have a good idea of their, you know, productivity. And the, the productivity is going to be a lot higher in the, the winter. No leaves.
If we don't get in, related in the winter.
A lot lighter.
Yeah.
I think the trees need to be trimmed now, and people are in Sky Valley now. And I think the reason we have the city is to do the stuff that we need when we need it. And I think ten dollars an hour off a hundred and seventy-five, or off, off two hundred, sort of misses the point of why we're here, we're here to get stuff done.
Well, we, we, we're going to ver, we want to verify that first, that that is.
Well, sure.
It, it, it's real vague how that reaches, is this ten dollars per hour? Oh, for what, but, but yeah, it, it needs to be, it needs to be done, and probably would be being done if we didn't have a piece of equipment that was broken down.
I understand.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just had some tree work done, I paid a heck of a lot more than the unit prices that he is, that Ellenberger is suggesting. So this looks like a really good proposal to me, but, you know, ask Ellenberger, how long does it take to do a mile on Alpine where you got all kinds of stuff hanging over it? And then how much on Sky Valley Way where there's nothing hanging over?
He's never going to, he, he wouldn't ever give you a price like that, because that doesn't exist anywhere.
Yeah, well, doesn't he have an idea of how, how fast he can go on the overhang places?
It, it, the conditions are so different from, from road to road, I think the only way to do it, you got to get them out here, and I agree, I, I think this is a great proposal, I think these prices are very fair.
I didn't, I didn't, I just want to understand how you, how you use it.
My, my thing with waiting the winter is your productivity to be a lot higher.
Yeah, you're going to lose.
But, um, with that being said, if there's some areas that have to be done of priority, then if they're that low, then you don't need a bucket truck to get those, if they're hanging down and hitting a car. I mean, sure, we've got equipment to do, to do that, those job, we can at least maintain that right now. If you get a pole saw, uh, that goes up in there, and those go, you know, fifteen, twenty feet.
Some of those are a lot higher though.
Yeah.
But they're all not.
Connie, I'm not saying all of them, I'm saying the ones that are down low enough to hit a car. The priority, the ones that jump start hard.
You know, the other, the other, the other part of this, you know, I, I've been in the mountains for eight years, and I've dealt with contractors after contractors, contractors, and the SOBs don't return phone calls, they won't give you estimates, and they won't break it out by hourly, and maybe that's just the way life is in the mountains. And, you know, we can keep talking about getting, you know, going out and rebidding it again for the third time, but, you know, my experience is, if you get somebody who can, who can convince you that they can do the job, and you, you know, someone's just left in the situation where if you want it done, you've got to go ahead and bite the bullet and do it. And I'm not saying be foolish with the taxpayers' money, but, uh, we're all elected to, 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 to take care of the people's business, and I don't think anybody's looking at it stuff, you know, we don't have to cover our tails by getting a bunch of, a bunch of bids if it's going to delay getting the work done until after everybody's gone from Sky Valley. So, well, this is bad, you know?
Well, I agree. We have a contractor that the city has experience with, right? You, uh, feel good about his bids in the past, and his work in the past, it's the impression I have. It's just understanding the bid and how can we best use it.
I agree.
Is it hourly rate?
By, by the way, do you, with, with him, would you have his current insurance information on file? Did he just keep it, follow the city?
Well, we could always have the agents drive around and.
I think.
Pick, pick the worst streets.
I think he should kind of stay with them the whole time while they're out here working, would be my recommendation, but.
Well, yeah, but I mean, are you going to just tip, put them in, uh, one section of the Sky Valley, you're, you were talking, well, pick the bad spots, move them here and there, around. Myself, I would, you're going to come in here for a hundred hours, put me in one section, do the whole, whole section, then move to another one.
Right, well, I don't think I'm suggesting a hundred hours, I don't think anybody else is either. Neil and I seem to agree on, and with, with Linda calling Phil and saying, could you hold your prices here if you came in for forty hours? See what kind of production that is, and then let's meet again, consider what they were able to get done, let's consider equipment cost and the forces that we have, and, and, instead of the, the, the whole hundred hours.
Yeah, I think you learn something from that type of program. And it did so deserved.
It, it could, Chip, Chip just brought up a good point, could be a joint effort, maybe if, if we're going to think, have James with them anyway, it's up to you guys, but if James is going to be out there and then we hook our chipper out, up and put in two labors with them, that could really get some good production done, let these guys take care of the tall stuff. That's the most time-consuming thing, keep them moving along the road and have their forces and two or three of our guys with our good chipper, their good chipper, and.
Don't even bring theirs, just keep Ellenberger going down the road, knocking limbs off. Our guys pick it up, because I mean, they can do that, put in their own chipper, and then that way we're going to get a lot more bang as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, and then it's, he could definitely come out with the, the four-man crew instead of the five-man crew, and then make it just a quarter.
And they may not even need a four-man crew if that's all you're doing, might be out of two, which would be.
Well, I think this, this, we got to a point where we could have a discussion with Ellenberger and see how this would play. He's got a degree to that kind of situation.
If we were going to use our.
Meeting on Tuesday.
Our people, we would probably need to do it in the wintertime, otherwise they'd get real hot on everything else. Or if we were using our guys, you know, we'd be pulling them off the mowing and we'd eat and.
Well, what if we had a bucket truck, too, we'd operate the bucket truck.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We did, I think that's a wintertime activity to eat too.
So when they did break down.
I'm sorry?
When did it break down with the bucket truck?
Well, we sent it.
They worked to hang the lights and take the lights down.
Yeah.
So why didn't the tree trimming get done in the winter?
They didn't get to, I can't answer that, it was supposed to be done. In between weather and, and other things that they were doing, they didn't get as much done, they did some, but they didn't get as much done as what I had. They had some truck, you know, problems with the truck, you know, in that time too, but, um, but I was still hopeful that we would get a lot more done.
Well, do we have enough questions and all that we can have a discussion, a meaningful discussion with Ellenberger and get more understanding of where we want to go?
Do we want to ask him to come to Tuesday's meeting? Okay.
I don't know if you want him to come to Tuesday's meeting, but I think we need to meet with him. Somebody does.
We can, if you want, then we can just postpone this to the next month's work session and have him appear at the work session.
I don't think, I just don't think that's necessary. Linda, if you're calling it, communicate our, the ideas we have and just get his response and see what he says.
We don't need to meet all of us.
She can report back to us.
So do we want to just push it to the next workshop or do we want it on the agenda? I mean, I'll talk to them today if I can.
I think push it to the next workshop where we can discuss it like we're discussing it right now. But that's just my opinion, like no other way.
I think if you've got to hear, excuse me just a minute. I think if you would speak to him and just tell him how we've been discussing this and the options that we've brought up and get some idea as to his answer.
Well, one of the things, we've run in, one of the snags and one of the things we've been talking about, putting some of our forces with our wood chipper in is not an option to do it if we're looking at it this summer before the guys are cut up. So if Linda's saying, "Look, if we're going to use our, part of our forces anyway, it's going to be December, January, why don't we try to..."
But if he comes in, you know, he might want to change his pay based on, he's looking at a hundred hours. We want him to come in for forty hours.
Okay, why don't we just put, what about this for a goal? Linda confirmed that he could come in, not with a five-man crew, with that four-man crew at a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour sometime between now and Labor Day. Is that a reasonable timeframe, you think, for a forty-hour week to see what he can get done? If he can, then I could, you know, I would be prepared to vote on that on Tuesday.
By the way, his name's Ellenberg?
Right, Phil Ellenberg.
No, not Berg.
I don't think I said that.
No, I know you did. Jim said Ellenberg. The rest I don't think.
I made some blud there.
You can do all that, get that all remembered. All right, let's go to item six. Item six is a review on the bucket truck bids that we have. If we want to discuss this or if we want to wait until we see what at the next one.
I have a question here. The U-2010 Ford, how many miles is on that Ford? And does it come with a warranty?
No, it's not going to have a warranty.
No.
But the others, the 2018 and 2019?
Yeah.
And what's the difference between a regular bucket truck, an urban forestry truck, or a rack? What's...
Well, the rack is the cab cover that protects, like, when you're cutting and the branches fall down. Like, we had one that came down and smashed the windshield of our bucket trim. So it protects the cab and the...
That sounds like it's a necessity.
The urban forestry has the leaf box in the back. So it's set up as on one unit. So you, or not the leaf box, but the chipping box. So whereas we have a separate truck and box that we use, urban forestry truck has it, the box.
You just carry the chipper right behind the bucket truck and keep going. I got you. We use the bucket truck more for that type of work, don't we, than anything else?
We, I mean, we use it for light bulbs and Christmas decorations and stuff, too.
Right. I mean, I think isn't that the majority? I mean, you can do that with that type of forestry-type units sometimes. We can do all the light bulbs. But I mean, if the majority of our work is cutting limbs, then I think that's probably a smarter route to go.
That one was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The 2010 was fifty-eight thousand, what rounded, the wrong way, but fifty-seven, one fifty-five.
Yeah, but do you want to buy a truck several?
That's supposed to be engine in my car.
Well, yeah, but you don't use your car every day because of heavy equipment. Where to tear up the engines and drive them.
Bucket trucks wouldn't be used every day. I mean, it's one of the...
It's 2010, how many hours it got on it now?
How many hours does that have on it?
It's kind of a hundred thousand miles on it.
Hundred and four thousand.
That's how you know, how many?
Oh, yeah.
How many hours it got on it now?
Because they sit run and run and run.
Great.
Well, it's a two-wheel drive, too.
Yeah.
If all the dividends have gone to Puerto Rico, how come this one's available here?
By the way, that's coming from a Ford van over there. Point out.
I used to work around all this kind of equipment. The area was just stuff like teach safety on it. Because that was my function in life, decided working on old cars. So when you start talking a hundred and something thousand miles, road miles, how many hours of sitting time with the engine racing to run that aerial bucket, it's going to triple that. How many engines I had put in it so far?
Very good point. Thank you. Very good.
Yeah, they do run. They keep them running the whole time.
They don't run slow.
Good thing I was...
Well, I'm almost totally against used equipment. For the city, for the difference it costs.
Yeah.
You can have it, turns this over.
Linda, do we have any idea what the resale value would be of the old truck? The old lift? Do we have to fix it to sell it? Is that the market?
No, we're not going to fix it.
Working ones or you think it's...
We're not going to fix it. We'll just keep it.
Can I ask what's wrong with it?
Um, the, there's a hydraulic problem within the boom and then also the braking system, when you're, when you have it in use, that whole thing needs to be replaced. So that's about twelve thousand, one hundred dollars.
Hydraulics over probably, in trouble.
That's the estimate.
Is this one that you used?
It's only twelve. We can fix it.
That you looked at this one, too?
That's the only one that bid. I had pulled up some, some other sites, but that's the only one that bid.
What do you think about fixing it? We should put twelve into what we have.
Well, I consider it a condition of the truck and I can't sit here and say twelve thousand hours.
Can you show it to the boss? Can you carry the truck?
If the twelve ran, we can get another three or four years out of it, but that'd be pretty smart to consider.
Might be.
How old is this truck?
If we can fix it for twelve, we can get another three or four years out of it. It might be, it might be worth a repair.
Where is it?
What year is the truck?
That's a time when you need to start it.
Oh, nineteen ninety-four.
What year is it?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four?
That's a lot of engine now.
Just what that might not be.
It's kind of old.
I will say, if we, when and if we were to ever buy a new one, it should probably last us forever. You know, more than we, you know, possibly.
Could we not even rent it out to other communities? Don't do that? Okay. Yeah, yeah, you're right. I remember something.
I'm seeing how much airtime you can get on a Hertz car.
Since you're a Ford man, I want to ask you, I don't see this, and I just, just for me, since all I know about vehicles is I put the key in the engine and turn it and it moves after I kick on the gas. Which one out of this and this, that's diesel and that's not, are both four-wheel driven?
Okay, that's a big time to ask you. That is very gas, hundred diesel.
Oh, that's gas, hundred diesel.
Wrong. I think, yeah, you'd probably burn, if you ran that for an hour, you'd probably be twelve, fifteen gallons of gas. So diesel would probably just have that. But it's twice, it's a lot more expensive to start with and there's a lot more maintenance of diesel. But that engine, that would last twice as long, that engine. Not that we intend to bad engine, but it belonged to motorhomes. That's where they belong.
Y'all know which one I'm talking about from this list?
I didn't look at the price. I looked at the engines.
Where are you told it?
Yeah.
I did. This one is the one that he's talking about, the diesel.
Right. Yeah, and so is the Altec.
Well, that's six point seven degrees.
Yes, it is.
That one.
That's the newest.
Yeah.
And that's amazing.
It's a lot better than the older ones.
And the way forward, the state contract one, you can also get a diesel option for forty-one hundred dollars.
Well, I don't care, so.
Interesting that all four have... Is anybody else...
Any more discussion on the truck? Here we go to item seven.
Well, what you want me to do is release anything.
On the, on the truck, it shows that it was planned for some money to be spent on the truck, didn't bucket truck. In 2019, forty thousand dollars, I sold the...
The capital plan.
Yeah, capital, capital plan. But however, I don't see any funds, but I mean, this or four.
And that's my concern, we're going back into cycling.
Well, listen, I want to put a bid for the doing the work because we don't have anything in the budget for this year. And we're talking about a budget turning next week.
Are you saying there was no money in the budget for maintaining the railways and trimming the roads? Treating the trees back on the road?
Talk about for a budget, capital equipment.
That's true.
I thought...
If we're going to have the tree trimmer come in here, then I would just move this, item six, to a further review after we've had the tree trimmer come in and do a segment of the content.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's why I brought it up.
So we just...
Place the left of the tree.
Place the bucket truck for a further study later. And item seven. Linda?
Okay, I'll explain this to you because I've already been through this one time. What this is, right now in the state of Georgia, you cannot start serving alcohol until 12:30. This is a referendum in the Senate bill which allows us to start serving earlier during the day. We have had a request from the club to do this so they can start serving earlier. And the reason I have this timeline in your packet is because by the 27th of July, which is next week, we would have to have your resolution for this special election, which would be in conjunction with the election on November 6.
I'm all for it. I think we ought to have attorney kid draft it and get it done.
There actually in the packet, there is some information. I have the actual Senate bill in here and also, too, I have draft resolutions made that as well.
Yeah. So the GMA has a package.
Yeah, they already have it.
What's the deadline on the 27th?
The 27th, so we'd need to be on the...
We have to let Tammy know once.
Yes, I've already notified her. I've already talked with her about it.
I'm all for it.
They do.
Can you be to draft the resolution or do you already have it?
I have one.
Yeah, if it's the one from the GMA, that's...
Yeah, the same one. Yeah, I wanted to choose that one.
Understand or revoke in November for the, I don't think anybody's going to care about that. So I thought it was just us. It's got to be voted on by the community, yeah.
Right.
But we have to prove it to get it done.
Well, let's keep it on there.
You're good.
We can do that.
Get that beer at eleven o'clock while you play golf.
On Sunday, when you should be.
I don't have my clock there.
Now, you want to make a review.
Sorry, that's on, okay.
All right.
Mike, can I ask, maybe adjourn this section or go into executive session?
Nah, I'll slide it.
Oh, what?
For purposes of discussion, potential litigation.
Move the second to be adjourned to executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you. See you next week. I'll see you.
Going into executive session.
Oh, are we going to stay in here?
You could wait out there. Good guy speaks loud so you can hear.
Is this, they have to be impressed or they're not acceptable?
Yeah, one.
Or that one responds?
Fifteen?
Yeah, just... We had an executive session on litigation, which will be the SDS. We just talked about, because the county had sent the city a letter last month and they authorized me to send a response to that, which I can do today. So I guess we'll probably get that with an open record request after I send it out.
Have you seen the letters that the county sent to the cities?
To clean?
Uh-huh. And none of them addressed, just plain in Sky Valley?
I have not, I don't think so.
Okay.
Is it not available?
He just didn't have to request it.
Oh, okay.
He might now.
You can have your thing pinned back on.
No further business. I have meeting adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all missed something.